In school committee meeting, it's in order. We have one first act, and that is to call for nominations for the chair of the school committee for the 2018-2019 school year. We've got to come to a screeching halt.
Yeah. We need a chair.
So we need a chair. So what are your suggestions?
I am willing to serve again.
I nominate Dave to chair the school committee.
Do we have a second?
I second.
Any discussion?
Any discussion? All those in favor?
It's hard.
One more person. Thank you. No discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You can help.
Unanimous.
Very good. Thank you. May I have a chair as chair? Very good. So we will continue with the reorganization piece. We also need nominations for the region. Well, first for vice chair. And certainly willing to take nominations for vice chair. Mary has indicated she's okay serving again, but I don't think she cares one way or the other. So if Josh, if you have a burning interest in being vice chair.
No burning interest, but a willingness.
I nominate Josh Kowalski, vice chair.
Further nominations? Hearing on? Any discussion? I second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Josh is vice chair. Now we'll move to the region, and we need two for the region. Both Christine and Mary have indicated that they are happy to support the region. And seeing as that's a very time-consuming task, I'm happy to have them serve in the region personally. So does anyone want to make a nomination?
I move that Senator Christine, our representatives, to the region.
That's when you say it.
Mary.
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 Discussion.
All those in favor say aye. Aye? Very good. Okay. Now that we've dispensed with the housekeeping, we can do a fun thing. Fun thing in a way, but a sad thing for me personally, which is to recognize that Melissa McMorro, for the first time in my tenure as committee, is -- well, before I do that, I want to welcome Melinda Dambino as our new member. So thank you for serving. I do look forward to having her on the committee. But yes, with some sadness, I note that this is the first meeting that I've attended of a school committee where Melissa is not part of the committee. And she's been an extremely valuable member of our school and our committee. She's still involved in the school. And we'd like to recognize her service. So I have a few words, and a few words that others have given me, but first I'd like to -- would you like to say a few words?
Well, I'll say a few words. Sure. Well, this is my first meeting, but Melissa has been on the school committee also, so I'm already missing your presence here. But on behalf of the entire school community, the teachers, the students, the parents, the administration, we just want to thank you for your tireless advocacy for the whole school district. And really, in speaking with people that have been here for years, they assure me in my experiences that our district is much better, much stronger because of your involvement. So I just want to thank you. And we do have a token of our appreciation for you. And I do mean token. So it's a little swag bag of Carlisle Public School.
That's so good. Very valuable.
This is the leader of the -- this is this year's big prize.
I'm very excited for that.
The snow brush.
Wow. He's so fun. He hollers.
It's all Carlisle school swag from here.
Not going away.
Absolutely.
Josh, would you like to say a few words?
About last to me, Josh.
Thank you for serving with us. Have enjoyed it.
And I'd like to recognize Bill Fink, another alumna, alumni, alumnus.
Thank you. And there's no one in this room that knows how bad my memory is better than Melissa's. So I wrote a few notes, so I won't forget mention of some things.
Yes, that was one of my jobs.
I want to thank you. First off, I want to thank you for your service to the town and to the kids and the students of Concord and Carlisle. I want to thank you for your patience and overall coming demeanor at all of our meetings. I want to thank you for being a rational sounding board to help work through difficult challenges we've had over the years. I want to thank you for your pro bono wise legal advice on too many topics to count. I want to thank you for your leadership as chair for three years on this committee. And I want to thank you for serving on the region for two years, particularly this past year when our new superintendent needed your experience and support to learn her new role and the new talents. I want to thank you for your collaboration over the last six years, and most of all, I'd like to give you friendship.
Thank you, Bill. That stays.
Did anybody else in the audience wish to say a few words?
I could say a few words. I could just say a couple if that's okay.
I have some words.
Oh, oh, right. Sorry, forgot. Sorry.
So I'd like to first read from Christine, who couldn't make it today. Please tell Melissa that as a parent and member of the Carlisle community, I am grateful for the dedication and leadership she brought to the Carlisle school committee. As a fellow committee member, I am grateful for her gentle guidance and wisdom. The school and our children are always at the center of her thinking, and I will keep her example in mind as I continue to serve on the school committee. We will miss her. And then from my friend Louis Salami, former chair, who wishes to have me speak. Louis said that, "I recruited Melissa to join the school committee. It was one of the best decisions that I made during my time on the committee. Melissa approached her school committee role as I did, minimizing her speaking during school committee meetings and doing the homework ahead of the meeting. In this way, she was quite effective in shepherding a well-thought-out decision during the meeting. I only regret that the Concord School Committee has not attended the Melissa McMorro School of how to be an effective school committee member. I always valued Melissa's input and counsel on every issue we tackled. She was thoughtful, creative, and her decision-making was well reasoned. The regional school committee that we sat on together accomplished a lot during her tenure. We built a new high school, completed the fields renovation, introduced many new innovative programs to CCHS, managed the budget in a manner that was financially responsible and positive for the greater school community, and provided support for a highly effective superintendent, Diana Rigby. Melissa's quiet, effective style and dry humor will be missed. Thank you for making my tenure as a school community member so enjoyable. If you do not laugh, it is not fun." Or as the Navy says, "If it's not fun, you're not doing it right." Very good. And now for my own thoughts. My first encounter with Melissa was actually not by me directly. My wife stopped by her home on a Saturday morning in the spring of 2014 to pick up a petition form for me to get on the ballot for school committee.
You might have had my pajamas on.
She stepped out to meet Amy in her pajamas. That was an early indication of her commitment to the school and the school committee. Subsequently, Melissa took on the task of teaching me how to become an effective committee member. She also drummed compliance into me, something that I confess does not come naturally, although as the husband of an attorney, I'm used to being told that I'm doing it wrong. Though through Melissa, I understood the importance of not only gathering the facts and thinking through the issues, but placing the decisions within the framework of policy, precedent, and law. Melissa is an extremely perceptive listener who forgets nothing. Her institutional memory has been invaluable to me personally and to the committee's work. In her three years as chair, she successfully managed a contract negotiation, an administrative reorganization, and a new superintendent recruitment. I can barely comprehend Melissa's energy: three children, partner at a major downtown law firm, and service not only on both the Carlisle and regional committees, but on the region's strategic planning initiative, the superintendent's selection committee, and countless other duties. All I can say is it's great to be young. I will deeply miss Melissa's contributions as a committee member and sounding board for the many complex issues faced by the school and its committee, but I look forward to our continued friendship in the years ahead. Melissa, you will be missed, but your impact on the Carlisle school and this committee will not be forgotten. We wish you all the luck with your newfound free time.
Thank you. Well, I think just I won't belabor this anymore, but it is so meaningful to have my mentors here because I learned so much from everyone here who came before me. And that is the best thing about this community, about this school committee, and about this system, is that I can honestly say that every single school committee member that I have served with in Carlisle just has the community and excellence in the schools at the forefront of their mind. And that's something I learned from these guys, these two sitting here. But I see it in every individual, and that's just, that's what is just so much part of what makes this place great. Being on the school committee takes a ton of mental energy, right, Louis? But it can be very rewarding. So congratulations, Melinda, and thank you, everybody. Top-notch administrators that sit through all these meetings, the teachers. Cynthia, you're a huge part of keeping us in line, especially on open meeting law stuff and making sure we're doing things right. I appreciate that. And Nancy, I think you're doing fabulously. You're stepping right on where Claire left off. And I think that the school is a great place here with you, Jim, and I look forward to seeing how you guys accomplish. I won't, I'm not going away. So I am a bit of an elephant when it comes to memory, so I'm always happy to offer that up. But it's been a very rewarding, challenging, fun six years. So thank you.
Thank you. I don't have quite the bag of swag, but give you a little.
Thank you so much.
Wait, can I get a picture of you and your mentors, too?
Oh, yeah.
No.
We're going to sort of. You get the legs. That's Fred.
Oh, they don't focus. One more, one more, one more. Phil blinks, he always blinks. I don't.
He doesn't mean Fred. Are we going to go out of order?
Yeah, we're going to take a little bit out of order on the topic because Melissa has done as a parting -- taking off, Louis. Thank you for coming. Bye-bye. Good to see you. As her last official act, Melissa took on trying to reconcile the core policy. And because she's here and she doesn't want to stay here the whole meeting, we're going to move a piece of the policy up to the first item that we're going to cover. So the chair recognizes Melissa McMorro of Concord Street. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Maybe you could explain to us what the background is and what you did.
Um, John, just.
Sure, come on up.
So Jim quoted up the last draft of the policy that we looked at. I unintentionally got into fingerprinting requirements. So, thanks, Jim. So basically, the policy, I think you included it, Nancy, the one from Monday?
The one that says no changes on all the pages?
Yeah, where my, just handwritten. Yeah, so I tried to indicate. So we kind of basically went back to what the policy was beforehand, and I learned talking to MASC that although it is repetitive, the way that they build those two policies, they're basically two policies in one right now, is because one covers all the state requirements, one covers all the federal requirements. So they recommend that you don't mess with them to try to make them more streamlined, which you can see they're repetitive right now.
Yep.
But they do recommend against it. It didn't -- so the first few pages covers the fingerprinting.
Yeah.
And then the -- and then the second piece is basically the model core policy with our suggested edits.
And so you're getting rid of the headline. You're not separating them. You're trying to make it more continuous policy.
Yeah. So does that make sense?
Yeah, I mean, it's repetitive, right? So I guess so. I guess we have no choice.
I tried, Dave.
I know.
So we're still going to make it one policy, but just keep the?
So basically as it was, as it currently stands, with just a few edits, basically clarifying who's covered.
Right.
And then we attached the core acknowledgement form.
And covered persons as elsewhere defined. Oh, yeah, it is, right.
And what is the meaning of the, or the purpose of the second policy, also called formerly core policy, with a line through the title?
It's formerly known as formerly the core policy.
Yes.
It's now known as it's the.
What is the, in fact, what is the meaning of having this attached? Is this part of the policy? Is this the second half?
Yeah.
Okay.
So it used to just be this. And then when the fingerprinting law went into effect, we put the first three or four pages, the CHRI, we put it on top of the old core policy and called it the background check policy.
So its official name is now the background check policy?
Mm-hmm.
And where you said stat, you do put that adopted such and such, right? Stat means you leave it on or you cross it?
Where do they stat?
The first page.
Stat says nevermind.
Nevermind, right.
Yeah.
And then, just as a housekeeping, do the references that are in the first set should actually go at the end?
Mm-hmm. Oh, good point. Yeah.
The reference, you just move the reference part. Okay. And I realized, Melinda, you're just seeing all this verbiage brand new, so it's going to, we don't expect you to be knowledgeable. Any other comments? We'll vote later. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Okay, very good. Okay, public comments? Any, bye-bye, Bill. Thank you for coming. Nice to see you. Bye, Melissa. Any public comments? Okay. Let's move to the minutes. Cynthia, I have a process question for you.
Sure.
We had three to open as a core, and we'll only have two to vote because Melinda will not be in on the minutes. Is that allowed to do that?
No.
No? I think once you open?
Well, she can.
Once we open?
She's not part of the.
She wasn't here for those meetings.
I wasn't here last week. I can't go down.
Okay.
I was here, but I was there.
Okay, so that's going to be a legitimate vote. Thank you.
I see it means.
Okay. So any, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from April 11.
So moved.
I'll second. Any comment? We're down to really a thin crew here. Any discussion? No discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 2-0 with one abstaining. Good. All right, so now we can get on to the more meaty topics, first one being the school improvement plan. Who's presenting that? Both of you guys? Okay, come on down.
So last month, we were able to come to the school committee and review that work that we've been working together on this year for this year's plan. And then we said that we would be back this year to introduce some of the new goals moving forward for fall in draft form still. And as is always the case, it's a flexible document. So we are where we are at the moment, and you have an updated piece that Nancy has for you that worked since the last time we gave you those pieces.
So we have the 2017-18 and the 18-19, or it's all?
It should say 18-19 on the front of both of them. But the one that she just gave you tonight has a few additional active steps that we added.
The separate ones in fact.
Yeah, so throw the other one away.
Okay.
Oh, that's me. Okay, sorry. So we're starting to look a little bit more in-depth in the upcoming year into our professional learning piece. And we've had various iterations over the last few years of some of the work that we've been doing in terms of professional learning groups. We've established that as professional learning groups are groups of teachers and faculty who work together on one particular topic that we then share with the rest of the faculty. We've also had a different model where we've looked at school-wide initiatives. We've brought in sort of a broader look at social-emotional behavioral work. We've looked at some of the more intricate parts of literacy and math. And so keeping that in mind, this next year, we're looking again to effectively provide, you know, topics and areas of study that really affect teaching and learning and gets at some of the questions that even school committee has asked in terms of language work, in terms of looking at how we become a more global educational society, and how we have outreach for community service, some of the social-emotional supports for that, and some of the other areas that are determined by the SAC committee, like communication plan and so on. So that goal continues. We're hoping that we're continuing to also encourage our faculty participate in the shared leadership opportunities we have. We've been reaching out the last year and a half to include work with some of the local colleges to bring student teachers to our school, and that continues under the guidance of Mimi Gleason and Marcella, pretty much, who have been helping us to contact Leslie University in particular. We had four student teachers, I believe, this year, and several observation intern kinds of things, and we obviously want that to grow. We're also looking at ways that our leadership, our faculty can share their leadership out in different ways across the state. Maya Barry being a great example of that. She's been serving and offering professional development on many, many committees through the Library Association, through N Penn, through some of the technology piece. Nick Greenwood's very involved at Leslie University. He's working on, you know, getting our name out there basically and really, really trying to tag us together with some of the other universities and opportunities professionally that we can share our expertise with them and they with us. So that's part of it. Our educational evaluation plan continues to always be reevaluated. We've been pushing our faculty to really take a good, long, hard look in their self-evaluation and in their goal setting to try to match the district goals and strategies that were determined last year, that Jim and the rest of us sort of helped determine, that identify particularly those scope and sequence areas for computer science education, K-8. So that's another focus. We're looking, when we talk with staff, about how they're weaving in that technology piece and those engineering things that you were talking about, Josh, at one point, the robotics and some of the work that we want to broaden a little bit. And then finally, there's been a lot of work in the last couple of years to produce a digital citizenship overview, standard-based document that is coming out of the digital standards that the state are releasing or has released, and Maya and Nick and Jim and just the three of you, Jim, have been working on the digital citizenship sort of framework.
Getting curriculum in place.
Getting the curriculum in place.
Now we have to implement it.
Now we have to implement it. Right, right. So that's another area that we're really working on, that we'll be sharing more with you next fall and into the next year. We're focusing on five to eight because those are the standards that were, are easiest to interpret and first and foremost sort of on our radar, I guess, for lack of something better to say, that Maya felt today, you know, my conversation with her, that we would be able to make the most headway with those as a starting point for next fall. And then MCAS. We're there. We're 85% finished. It's going incredibly smoothly. Carlisle is helped by the fact that we've been working with computerized testing for three or four years now, so it's far less of a burden to introduce how to use the computer in terms of the testing itself. It's a very organized system here in Carlisle, too, so we have very few glitches. We have two or three more tests left to go, and we should be wrapping it up by next Monday and Tuesday with a couple of makeups. We've had a very healthy spring, so we haven't had too many makeups to make do. And then, as always, we take a look at the benefits of the MCAS test and how we actually use or don't use the results as part of our sort of data about children, but more instructional, more instructional than anything else.
Communication, that's yours.
So a lot of the work of the SAC this year was around communication and gathering data. Melinda helped us with that by making a wonderful survey that went out to parents. And so now the work is to take that data and to look at it for next year and make an action plan for how we want to move forward and making recommendations to the principals and superintendent around how parents get information from the superintendent, from principals, from teachers, the different ways and different places. And it's really going to hopefully allow parents much easier access and getting information the way that they would like. So that's the information that we'll be working on as a SAC. We're also looking at a new platform. Right now, we have iPass. We've been looking at a couple other platforms that might be easier to integrate schoolwide. So we've done some work this spring that will continue into next year. Nancy and Jim have been having that with Amy Smack. And so we're looking at a system that really can integrate and make it easier for how we are using that system. For instance, right now, the elementary report card is not on iPass because they could not create it the way we wanted it to look. That's just one example. So we're just looking at platforms. We have two that many districts have used in Massachusetts, so that work will continue into next year.
Is there any chance that they would let you pilot one of those or those?
Nancy, what did they talk about?
We're actually going to have people back in the fall to come here and have exams on the workshop, to work with the program, actually, and kind of see how it feels to them that way.
It seems like if they, you know, could let you pilot it for a few months in one of the grades or something, teachers could get a real sense of it.
So it's a student information system. It's the whole computer system.
It's learning management system as well, like what SchoolG does?
No. This is more the student information system, scheduling, how we access disciplinary data, how we access attendance data, how we share that data with the state.
Registration.
So it's more, it's more that, yeah, the back end as opposed to the front end, integrating with what parents.
Some of those platforms, though, I will say, you know, having worked with both of the two that you're bringing back, some of those platforms do have capabilities of extending out to, you know, the grading system, which parents might, you know, eventually some year down the road could look at, similar to what we tried to do with iPass this year. We were terribly unsuccessful with that, but it has that capability. It also has the capability of the scheduling piece, which I think is huge.
Is it an objective to have what, you know, was kind of a business would be considered an enterprise system? So you can do everything on one platform? Is that kind of your goal?
Or most.
That is the goal.
And what do you mean by expectation protocol? It's that, that's just what people want out, is that like the spec?
The spec and what we're, the spec for what we want this system to do and how it's going to assist our teachers also in sort of managing their educational piece as well.
Where do parents and students fit into the design and selection and needs of such a system?
We actually have done a lot of internal conversations about this, Josh, and our technology people really believe that the present system is very, very outdated for a school like Carlisle. It just doesn't fit the needs. It hasn't grown with the school or, you know, what's happening, you know, in other parts of the state. So we just started, you know, reaching out and just talking to people, teachers, you know. So, we just started, you know, reaching out and just talking to people, teachers in their own towns and what they see for their kids. And like, for example, so many people are able to access their report cards online instead of this hard copy that comes home and then you, you know, mail it back. They can, you know, we just feel to update it like that, we'd just, we'd still probably be doing, we'd be doing a lot of work, but in a different way.
That's not quite the question he asked. He didn't question whether it was an outdated platform. He just asked, are you soliciting input from?
What process are you using to gather input from other stakeholders and other potential users of this system, including the parents and students?
So, I would speak to, yeah, I'm really, we haven't really gathered on the outside because really, the majority of the student information system is the backend, is what Nancy's doing, is what Amy's doing, is our reports and the data. Now, knowing that the iPass system we have now, it lacks that capability that these systems do have that give parents much easier access into student information, whether it's grades, whether it's attendance. All these systems, registration, updating their own biographical data, these systems we're looking at have easier access for parents to use that. But we are, I don't think parents or students have the, have the understanding or the insight to be able to really weigh in on these systems without seeing the system.
I think that the expectation protocol might actually be asking all the potential users what their expectation is and what they would get out of it, right? So, if you're a parent, well, I expect to be able to then see my kid's report cards. And so, knowing that from all the different sides, the users, I think that's kind of what...
And you point out that parents may not know what they want, but if there were potentially discussions with groups of parents or present them what the difference options are, you might hear some feedback and some ideas or some complaints or some direction. And I'm not saying that direction should be the only direction that is followed, but I believe the input should at least be gathered and taken into account. Good point.
So, you're right. So, we should gather the information. I guess the way I'm looking at it, when we entertain companies that come in and share what the capabilities are, the capabilities are fairly similar across, like the top performance systems have the same similar capabilities. But it would be good to engage the parents and see what they're actually doing.
I mean, anyway, from system design, I kind of agree because front-end, or, yeah, front-end specs or expectations drive the backend mechanics, right? We don't expect the parents weigh in on the backend of how the data gets input into the system, but you got to know what you want out of the end product in order to design. You don't want to design the backend and then just push it out the front. That's what we have. We really should say to those providers, right, this is what we need. You're the customer, right? This is what we need. Now, how are you gonna make that happen?
With parents, what would you like to be able to see? What would you like to be able to do? What would you like these guys to be able to accomplish? If these vendors are interested in selling us these, their solutions, I would imagine they'd be happy to come and present to parents what they're, what they're offering, because the vendors are. Good point.
Moving on to literacy. So, one of the major assessments that we're using is the BAST from Fountas and Pennell, which we use from K to five. They have upgraded their assessment, so we are gonna pilot in one grade level to see if the, if we want to move all grades to the upgrade. We want to see what the differences are. We want to see how it's being used and if we really do need to move to that. So, we picked second grade, so we'll be piloting that next year, but still using it K through five.
What does it stand for?
It's an assessment.
Benchmark Assessment System. It just gives you sort of a reading level sort of information, but it's another data point that will help us really make some...
One of the other things we're looking at is to have criteria for Tier Two students to be eligible for services. So, we have that already designated in K to two, but we really would like to now, as we are looking to increase those services for grades three through eight, we really want to have criteria set that all teachers will be using to determine which students will have those services.
So, how, what methodology do you use presently for the three through eight kids?
Some of it is, some of it is formative assessment that's given in class, which would be like an end of a unit test. It could be just their classroom work, their MCAS scores. It could also be...
Teacher input.
Teacher input. And in many cases, the benchmark assessment system is administered to students that might be identified that we want to look at further.
So, you are using it, just not...
We're using it loosely, but not totally across, right?
And we're also looking at a tool that will be a screener for us to really, so that if we have kids take the screener and there's some red flags, now we'll go deeper. So, we don't want to go deep right away.
The best, the deeper the red flag.
Meaning that, so instead of taking a child who might be struggling a little, but we're not sure why, to give them a forty, fifty-minute assessment, we'd like to do a screener that we're looking into that would give us some place of where we need to focus.
Is that part of the BAST system or?
That is not. So, that's what we're looking at bringing on next year. Okay? In math this year, we, the math committee, sorry, no, this year, the math committee looked at all our programs, and we're still getting feedback from the teachers. We're looking at the strengths and the weaknesses. And then, the math committee is looking next year to look at the weaknesses that have been brought forward and to set an action plan of how we are going to address those weaknesses in each of the programs. And then also, we're, some of the teachers from middle school actually went to Bedford to look at an intervention support program, and we're looking at bringing that to Carlisle in math, the area of math next year. Yep. Something else that Carrie, Will, Verbitz, and I are working on, we're in the planning stages now, is to have some co-teaching opportunities in grades three and four as well as grades six and seven. So, right now, we're in the planning stages of what that might look like at the different grade levels, and we hope to be able to then, in September, come back and tell you exactly what that model will look like and the benefits of that model.
Can you give us an example of co-teaching, actually?
So, co-teaching comes in many forms, but the probably top form would be two teachers, special ed teacher and a general ed teacher, with a group of students in a classroom where now multiple students, high, middle, and struggling, will be able to have more face time with teachers in small group or one-to-one or one-to-two.
It was my impression that you're kind of doing that already.
We are doing that in places, but we are looking at doing more within classes. So, that's what we're looking to integrate.
Right. I think there's a little bit more formalized instruction that the teachers are learning about, too, during some professional development on the actual co-teaching model a little bit more. And this is also probably gonna happen in grade eight with our special ed teacher and our math teacher there. They're looking at doing some cowork. It could be...
They teach separately, or they're teaching the class together?
Together, one class together.
So, math in what?
In eighth grade, it would be math and special education teacher.
Oh, no, no, I know that. You're not saying like this one says ELA and social studies.
Right.
You're not having two different disciplines teaching together.
Right. So, it could be an ELA and a social studies match. Mickey's an example of that. Mickey in eighth grade works with Marcela, and they teach a class or two together. It could be the special ed teacher and that.
So, that's another model for the two academic disciplines.
Right.
All right. Moving on to build a community of respect to inclusion in a safe and healthy learning environment. So, again, we are continuing to look at how we are connected globally. Nick Greenwood came on as our technology integration specialist, and he has started that work. And so, we want to continue with Nick and with Maya, looking at opportunities of connecting our children globally, starting as young as K going through eight. So, that is something that we'll be looking at extending. We started OVAUS this year, which came out of our survey of challenge success. We have class meetings. Grade levels have done two class meetings a week using OVAUS, and others are also using the responsive classroom. This is a time that's building community and also building relationships so that when kids feel very comfortable and take risks in their morning meetings, then they'll go and do, take risks academically as well as in other areas throughout the day. We've had good feedback from that. We're gonna be continuing that work. We're looking at building some webinars about OVAUS that parents and community members can have access to so that they can see the different elements. We did do a training this fall for parents and community members, but we want something that's more accessible and online so that people can just look at that when they have time.
So, let me ask you a couple questions, Dan. One is, when you say taking risks, you mean what could be an example?
So, students, you know, sometimes when some students are very comfortable speaking in front of their peers, some are not, right? Others might not want to give an answer that might not be correct in front of their peers.
You want them to feel free to...
To feel comfortable.
Right. We want them to feel confident to be able to say something that might not be totally correct, but know that the teacher or their peers will be helping them.
It's an inclusive environment, so they won't help there.
Yep.
And so, it sort of leads into my second question, which is, OVAUS is a lot of things, right? It's, it's the inclusiveness and the comfort in that setting. It's also the not bullying out in the hallway kind of thing.
Correct. That's the main, the main point of OVAUS is an anti-bullying prevent, sorry, prevention program. But because of the way Carlisle already is collaborating and trying to have kids come together, we've also, that, that aspect of OVAUS, which is the morning meetings, the teachers have really taken ownership about building community. And by building community and caring for each other, then that's gonna carry out outside the classroom as well. Okay? Now, we're back to you.
Yep. So, then, in terms of our diversity and equity work this upcoming year, it will add, again, do you do multicultural case now?
Which one?
You can do the multicultural, right?
That's the next page.
Yeah. Okay. So, we've looked at, we've looked at quite a few things as a staff. We had opportunities this fall to bring Rob Jones into the school to work with the staff and on inclusion and equity of students and how we, how we treat each other and how we treat students, you know, what we might say to students intentionally or not intentionally, hopefully not intentionally. And our work continues there through a broadened community service piece that we're trying to weave into as many grade levels as we possibly can. The eighth grade is branching out a little bit this year. We're having a full community service day scheduled for June 20th, where everybody will be out doing things in various places all day long as a, as a, in small groups, but could be large groups. Learning about other programs through online communication. We've had some author Skypes with various places across the world, Afghanistan. We've also had some of the diversity and equity conversations with schools close to us, Rhode Island, the sixth grade's doing some of that this year. Had a book study together with a school group in Rhode Island, and they share on occasion, and they talk about some of the topics that we talk about here, like, you know, what's it like to be a student in your school and how diverse are we? Again, we weave in those class meetings designed really to focus on positive student climate, but social justice and having a relationship with the teacher so that you've got a go-to safe adult that you can spend some time with if you need to for any reason during the day or week. And then, we are, we're, you're gonna have to help me with this one, Jim. We're working on this new format for the multicultural festival, is that correct?
Yeah, we can, well, there's a, there's a group work on the multicultural festival for this year.
For now, right, but moving forward, we want...
Everyone's looking to bolster that. That came up through our survey we did earlier this year, that that was seen as a fundamental piece from parents.
A missing piece, and so somehow to wrap that into the school, but in a broader way, like rather than just as, it's a Saturday, I believe, right now, sometimes. So, is there a way that they can bring that into the, into the school at some point? Our social-emotional learning drives a lot of our conversation at team meetings every week. It drives a lot of our conversations in professional development. This is our second year of the OVAUS bullying prevention program results, and I think we may have, I think I brought that to you already before this, before now. So, we're heading into year three, and that's the year when, when we do that third survey, we'll start to actually really get some credible data of...
So, you can, you have two years of data. The first year...
Two years. The first year is just...
The baseline before, remind me, the baseline prior to introducing yet a program?
Correct.
Is that year zero or year one?
That's year one. And so, this is year two.
So, you only have one data point that people have gone through a full cycle?
Yes, correct.
And so, you're looking for a couple to establish some credibility.
Right. And when we get to that second part, I think by the end of next year, you'll start to see some validity in sort of the points that we want to pay attention to, like where, where do we need to change in terms of hotspots, in terms of, you know, are there places that we want to...
Anecdotally, what do you feel at this point?
Anecdotally, I think it's, having done this before in other places, I know it takes seven to 10 years before you actually start to see that whole full climate shift, but I think we've, we've made some headway in some places, in places where some bullying report on the first go-around where reported are not there in this year's survey, but there are some places that continue to be things that we should be looking at in our , you know, recess, lunchroom.
Is the cyber world part of the...
The cyber world is, is not as, it's not a huge amount of...
I mean, OVAUS, does OVAUS reach out to that behavior?
It does reach out to that behavior. And surprisingly, in some other, the other places before here that I worked on, too, that was not a, that was not a number-one piece. It was always those areas where kids had that free time to be together, and they're learning, they're learning their social structure. So, hallways and lunchroom and recess and that sort of thing.
Is it a conscious, purposeful decision to exclude the cyber world from that?
No, it's in there.
It is in there.
It's what the children report.
In the younger grades, what I've noticed a lot this year is that language, kids are using teasing or act of meanness versus always bullying, like where they're starting to distinguish...
They're being more subtle in their bullying.
Right. Because the teachers are, well, no, the teachers are really talking about what is teasing, what is an act of meanness, and what is bullying? Because we tend to use that word all the time. And so, I, I liked that some kids have said, yes, I was teased, but that wasn't bullying. It was a one-time and done. So, that's how...
So, you, you define bullying as recurring, recurring?
It's, it's over time. It's repetitive over time. It's intentional, and it's an imbalance of power. So, those are the three things.
So, but it could be intentional and an imbalance of power, but at one time, is that like an eighth grader teasing a sixth grader?
Which might be an act of meanness or...
But it's not a bullying.
It's not bullying.
But we keep track of those things because if it's teasing, right, if it happens to the same child or the same person is doing it to kids, then that becomes bullying.
So, the cyber, I guess, I mean, it seems to me, and of course, all parents struggle with this now, but given, you know, the, the event of last year's eighth grade, and really it's a different class of kids, but, you know, you mentioned, Carrie, like the free time aspect, which again, as a parent, I well understand, you know, non-productive use of free time. But that free time in front of a screen is a lot of free time. It's a lot of unmonitored free time. So, to me, that seems like as big a problem as... Does the program have a strategy for gaining from that?
The program makes resources available, let me put it that way. It makes suggestions and resources available to parents. It makes, you know, resources available to the school. If we, you know, we do a real good job, I think, in our health classes of working with our kids around cyber safety, around, you know, the dangers of too much screen time of, you know, they actually, I think it's Lynn Carmel's seventh grade program who really gets into sort of what enough screen time does to the brain, you know? I mean, even that way, not so much the cyber piece, the bullying piece, but more what is, how is it affecting, you know, their work? And so, yeah, I mean, it's, there's stuff available. There's plenty of things available, and we've been trying to put as many resources as we can on our website under that OVAUS piece, too, for parents to use. But then, we have parents who feel like it's not an issue, you know? We have parents who say, I'm fighting every night with trying to take away, you know, the iPads. So, yeah.
So, what you're saying is that cyber bullying is in the universe of the things that the OVAUS covers, and you're saying that that's not one of the things that the kids are reporting with great frequency right now?
As an area of bullying, no.
Right. But the OVAUS program presents you with, you know, options of what you can do when you see bullying or when it happens. So, I think that the place where we can address some of the issues around cyber bullying and social media, it would be in the digital citizenship curriculum, the pieces that you're already implementing at the different rate levels.
And that is part of the, yeah. The other, is he leaving?
Is your cat in the tree? Are they getting your cat out?
They trained last month, the same night.
They trained right there?
Yeah. They trained last month at the same time.
They'll let us know if, we have to...
The alarm ding a lot.
One of the other things that I think really also helps us is that we've been participating in the challenge success... is that we've been participating in the challenge success work with Concord Carlisle High School, Dover Sherburne, sorry, Weston is part of this group. And every couple of months administrators come together at CCHS and talk about the challenge success practice, which includes looking at balancing time and homework, which is where that all started. This is the group out of Stanford that we, we've been with now for going into year third, fourth year, I think, almost. Concord and Concord Carlisle High School have sort of caught up to where we are in our conversations about homework. I think there's been some changes at the high school that have been good changes about sort of wellness and balance. And it's an interesting meeting to go to because it gives you a perspective of what all the other school systems around here are doing to support that. Plus brings speakers and resources to the communities around us. So we'll continue with that group. And then the continuing conversation, obviously, from grades four to eight about homework, purpose and meaning of assignments, how we're grading consistently across the grades, and then how are we actually scheduling? Scheduling was our first tackle because, you know, there were overloads. Nobody was talking to anybody else. They didn't realize how much was being assigned. Kids were drowning. Cam can tell you that because he was, he was the first year that we actually worked through some of the modifications of a balance and timing and how we were really sort of being aware of how we were putting all this together. So that A three level.
Okay, I recall a few years ago, there were focus groups of parents and a bunch of meetings about the role of homework.
Right.
Is it intentional that faculty and administration are among the, the people involved in this and not parents?
Question. I think at this point, you know, the part that we have on our school improvement plan is for our faculty to really be looking at what are they giving to children as homework?
So you solicited all the parent input that you're.
A parent piece to that, you know?
I'd encourage you to continue to gather parent input. For no other reason than parents will better support the outcome of this, of this, of the project.
Yeah, yeah, no, I agree. Office still? You do the whole thing?
Yeah, because we're done. Two more things are done.
Oh, my gosh, okay. You're doing tiered support.
I know you are.
All right. We get along so well. Anyway, continuing under our equity and excellence in learning, part of the, the rest of our work in the last couple of years has really been to take a look at the tiered instructional support for developing sort of our inclusion and in-class support and consultation between teachers. And this involves time to talk about students. It involves identifying students who might need additional support and figuring out a way to structure in-class support with teachers, but also in-class support with multiple teachers. It's grade level programs of intervention that support all learners in school. And that's where Dennett has already referred to the, the potential for a universal screener. In fact, this pretty much reflects one of our previous goals. And then finally, last year, we were.
I'm sorry, Carrie, who's, who does the screening?
The teachers would do the screening.
The classroom teachers?
If we, if they've identified somebody through a list of criteria, we see that you might, we want to know more about your learning at literacy or your learning in math. It might be one indicator of a combination of criteria that might say you need additional support here or you don't.
Then is the professional development that you're looking at for the coming year really, is some of it geared towards how to offer these different tiers of support?
Yes.
The classroom teachers themselves? Or is it a co-teaching model, one of those methods that you mentioned before?
Can be.
Different, yes and no.
Or you're looking more for strategies that the teacher, the classroom teacher themselves can implement at varying degrees and levels?
It could be, or having support from outside, someone else coming in. So it's a combination of what a teacher will do or perhaps someone coming in to help with ELA or with math.
It could be, it could be a blend of anything. It could be just things, strategies that I'm using in my classroom.
Which it is presently, right? But you're just averaging more uniform.
It is, but we're honing it a little bit and we're making it a little bit more formal and we're looking for additional criteria to make sure.
So, so under literacy, we talked about BAS and then pilot for BAS. Is that really a subset of this?
Could be.
Well, the, the BAS does all students, right? So tier two is specific students who are struggling. So they might already have taken the BAS, but I, but in the younger grades, so, right? So because we use it as a tool for everyone in the younger grades, in the older grades, they've used it for kids that struggle because we use it up through fifth grade. And then for six, seven, eight, they've used it in the past for kids that struggle, but they don't use it for all students. We're in the elementary, every student will get the BAS.
Well, that says relates to litters.
Correct.
But for the other areas that you.
So for, so Ames, Ames was just an example of one particular type of data that we might be looking at, and that one also can be used for math as well as literacy, so.
Yeah, I guess, I mean, just from a kind of structural standpoint of the plan, I question why the BAS piece is in the literacy initiative. To me, that, you spoke to it being, you say here, determine criteria for eligibility for tier two support. So, I mean, it is, it's just, it's an evaluative mechanism to determine those kids who need initial support. It's not by itself teaching literacy to those who don't.
No, but it's an assessment we use for all students, not just tier two. And they've upped that assessment, so we want to see if we also want to move to that or not move to that. So that's why it's under literacy, because it's one of our ways that we are judging kids at their particular age to their, the level of reading.
So let's step back from that a little bit and just talk more broadly about tier two support, you know, in the context of tier one and three. And this is a subject we discussed, because it does seem, I mean, just broadly, I guess, from my view is, as we get better at identifying needs, which is a good thing, we're finding that more kids need stuff, right? So that need, the, the, the need for these kind of supports is increasing. And yet, and the budget side, you know, we struggle with scope creep effectively, right? So how can we use the people more effectively? Can you address that part of this?
It's a conversation we have every month, right? How do we use our people more effectively, right? What, what are our needs, you know? Is it that we need more reading support? Is it that we need a math intervention time period in our schedule that classroom teachers can work with? Is it that our specialists can look at their, their work with classroom teachers in a different way and support kids directly? Or are they, are they coaching our teachers to do the support themselves? Is it taking aides or repair professionals and training them?
Right, it's all those things.
It's, it's all those things. And it's, it's a constant flexible conversation.
The tier two is you pull them out of the classroom and the tier one is in typically.
Or it could be within the classroom as well, but it might be a small group working in one thing.
So an example in the elementary of tier two that's more teacher-driven is if everyone sees the teacher twice a week in small group, but there's a group that sees them more, so they're getting more than the rest, that would be considered a tier two, okay? But also if Kathy Mackless does a pull-out for six weeks to, to help focus, that also can be a tier two. That's a general ed, teacher helping, right? It's not special ed.
It doesn't have to be special ed, a person providing.
It can't be special ed on the focus of their IEP, because that would be tier three.
Right. I'm not asking what the priorities are, but is there a process of explicit prioritization of the various types of services that can be offered at different levels?
Say that one more time for me.
Is there a process, a specific prioritization or rank ordered numbers of priorities for services within each service level?
Yes.
And how often is that assembled and reviewed?
Probably throughout the whole year, like, so right now, we have a strict criteria for tier two. That happens every six weeks. IEPs are extremely documented for time, for who's doing the testing. So that is very regimented.
So you have specific goals or performance metrics regarding how often an IEP is reviewed, from what I'm understanding. But what I'm asking is slightly different. You spoke a few minutes ago about a, a range of potential services to be offered. Is there a rank ordered listing of services within each service level that are considered?
I don't know, go ahead.
Well, I think, I think maybe what you're, let me see if I do this right. So we're looking at criterion for each individual child, right? So if we see that we want to dig a little deeper and find out more about you and we give you a particular criterion to assess where your reading level is or what, what your math level might be or whatever we determine. And we determine that you need a tier two intervention, then our priorities from there might, might be limited by what we have available in our small group work. We have in language, the level of literacy intervention work that is an intense six to eight week, every day, 45 minutes a day, reading intervention work that's checked at the beginning and checked at the end to see whether we've increased our reading level and our comprehension piece and our fluency and all of that. And then if we need to do that again for another eight weeks, we, we do that. If it's, if it's math intervention, it might mean coming out and speaking, spending some time with Leslie Yanka and working in a small group kind of thing. But prioritizing, I think, I don't know that you could say that one thing fits all. It's got to be looking at your specific needs and how we need to put something together.
Right, so a teacher can bring a meeting to what we call presently task.
Child study team.
It's called differently in the middle school.
It's changed now.
So every teacher can bring a child to a team and that's where we then prioritize for that child how we want to move them forward.
Okay, so it's, the prioritization is per child. What about the services overall that are offered? Obviously, you, you, there may be a perfect match between an individual child and the services offered, but across the population, there may not be. How, what is the process for evaluating the services offered to see whether they are consistent with, whether they match the priorities of the individual children?
So that's constant, because for IEPs, we have to have people on staff to fill those. Tier two, that's why we're trying to build tier two as our population needing services. We're starting to try to, for instance, in the elementary, we move someone from one position to another position to be working in grades three and four, right? So I know that Carrie's doing the same thing for five through eight. So that, we're shifting what we already have in the building to meet our, our needs as they shift.
But I think what you're also saying is like, what, how do we know if it's working for that particular child? And so if it isn't, what are the other options for?
Well, I guess there are two parts of it. One is, is there a feedback loop where you're checking that what you're doing is, is the right thing? But then more broadly, given that we do have finite constraints.
Yeah.
They're, they're large, but, but still finite. Are we employing the right processes to make sure that the right trade-offs are being made? That we can't offer every service we would ever want to every child? We, we know that.
We know it, right, yeah.
So then, so, so then are we making, are we using a rigorous process to identify those priorities? Is my, is my question.
That takes place at every weekly, once a week, the teams are together and they discuss children's progress, right? They have a child, we have a child study team twice a week, actually, at the middle school. Once for student academic progress and that's, that exact time is like, what have we done this week with this person? Well, how far have they gotten? What's the feedback? What's our formative assessment look like? You know, where are we? What do we need to change and tweak? So once a week, there's a 45-minute period when the team is together. And then there's also an administrative time period where we often talk about kids. When I'm there and services as well.
Yeah, but I think, I mean, I, I kind of agree with where I think Josh is going. I certainly don't question the rigor and thoroughness of your internal evaluation process. And I know firsthand from my kids how deep you go and how effectively you work it. So as Josh said, on the individual kid-by-kid basis, there's needs and matching, blah, blah, blah. And then from a intra-year basis, there's the shifting of resources. If you can, you know, if it's a literacy specialist, presumably that person can move through great, different grade levels. But if it's more math needs, then there are literacy needs and you don't have the right mix of people. I think that's kind of, at the end, we have to sit down on the budgetary side, I guess, on a year-over-year basis. And I don't, I, I have to agree, I'm not fully comfortable with that piece of the process that on aggregate, so you get done with all this stuff and, you know, maybe starting in September, we sit down, we start to frame our budgetary needs. And maybe it's more addressed to you, Jim, than to these guys. But the, the, you, you'll say to us, you know, well, I need three, you know, you got Rex out for three math specialists and two literacy specialists, you know, whatever it is, and we can, oh, yeah, yeah. But really, what we should be saying is, show us the data, show us the buildup of that delivery model that drives you to that mix of people. And you're always a year behind, right? You, you don't know the current year you have, really, other than.
But we, so we're doing that now, right? We're coming to gym. We have all of the kids that either have gone through tier two and Will has all the documentation for tier three. So it's very easy for us to show you data of children who have received services at tier two and tier three. Because we meet multiple times over children if they're coming into tier two or three.
Let me just say formally that we'd like to really dig into that data next, at next year's budget cycle, to really understand that buildup, okay?
Oh, absolutely. We dig into it every time we. It keeps having to make a decision, right?
Yeah, right.
But that's important, and it's important, and I, I always hesitate to try to answer because I always go, but I think when we're talking about tier two, it's not as structured as tier three. And it's more flexible. And it, and it's very, it's very individually designed. It's not an IP, but it's individually designed. Our teams are meeting, looking at the needs of the children, seeing what each child needs, what we can provide in the class, and if we need to provide some pull-out tier two support. And all these, all these, all these changes take place over a period of time, four to six weeks. And we gather data to see the effectiveness and then we reassess and see where we are.
Yeah, but it's not, we don't need to audit that.
No, no, and I'm, I'm going back to that original question.
Does the mosaic look like in aggregate? And how is it changing over the year to year?
And the tier two support is not special education services.
I get it, but it's, it's extra, it's people.
Looks differently in the budget. And we are doing that within what we have in place. And that's where it comes to professional development, our ability to train our aides to have a variety of skill sets so they can be utilized in different ways, whether it's literacy and mathematics or something.
So as we cultivate multiple strategies for tier two over time, we should collect data about which ones are, for the most part, working the most effectively. And then we could put resources towards cultivating those further. That's, that's what we're saying, right?
Well, that's what they're saying. What I'm saying is, after you aggregate all that, we got a, we got a governor on the budget, you know? We have to, we got a bottle, you know, and they're saying, can we warn more? You know, so we got to really make sure that we're understanding how that all fits in, that's kind of.
But one final thing, I think when we're talking about tier two supports and our ability to increase those, we are doing that in a mindset of not trying to expand.
Yeah, no, I like.
We're trying to do it with the resources we have in place by developing those resources and utilizing them more diverse.
That's a good stat.
So let's, let's finish, let's finish this off.
That's a pretty simple one. We, we were looking last year at joining the youth risk survey. And so we had reached, reached out to, Jim, is it through Concord?
It's the Emerson Consortium.
Emerson, that's right, Emerson Consortium. And we're delayed in being accepted into that capability. So it's delayed until 2020 because there's always a two-year wait between the tests, so.
So what are you doing until then?
It'll be coming probably in the 2020.
But for the next two years.
So for, for next year, they're in the development, they're in the analysis and development of the next survey. So we'll have someone involved in that phase so that when it comes to the, for the survey. Is this the interviews that basically ask kids, are you a risk?
Are you a?
No, so this, no, no, that's, that's, that was a state mandate. This is one where, it's really, it's done in a variety of communities across the town. Well, the Emerson Consortium does it in a lot of similar towns. But it's, it's probably a hundred-question survey. It spans from do you wear a bike helmet to, you know, that, um, pen up, police, drugs, alcohol, every other question. And it's, it's very good data. We, I went to a presentation of the Concord data. And really, the data is, we can take Concord data and we can take the aggregate data and say, these are probably the same issues that our children deal with. So let's develop programming, let's integrate that into our health curriculum, let's, let's use this information.
Carrie, what's the, or Dennett, Carrie, what's the timeframe now for this plan? You're going to refine it through the rest of the school year?
Yep.
And then when does it become sort of the official school improvement plan? Or is this, is it?
This is pretty, this is.
This is pretty much it.
This is pretty much it, I think, as a, as a foundation. But it's always a flexible document, so there might be things that, you know, don't go, I mean, it's, it's goals, right?
But this is, this is essentially the goal setting.
This is the essential goal setting for next one.
Very good. And who worked on, remind me who's on the sack? And who worked on, remind me who's on the SAC?
So there's, so there's an equal number of parents and teachers and administrators and then a community member. So we have six parents, we have four teachers with two administrators and a community member.
So there is a certain amount of parental input into these places?
And those parents will go out and talk, just as our teachers will go back and talk. So it's really a place that people are going out and getting information to bring back.
Okay, great.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So I'm sorry, Allison, I kind of, I should have looked ahead at the minutes and I made you work on your knitting wrong. I'm suggesting I push you up since there's no point in... So let's skip to the review of CEF grants, I assume that's why you're here.
Okay. Um, the Kell Education Foundation met in April and we reviewed seven grants. And for the first time, I think, that since I've been on this committee, we opted to fund or partially fund all of them, so I'll just walk through them. We had all of the middle school English teachers plus Kathy Mackless request to go to the National Conference of Teachers of English, which is in, where in the goodness where is it this year? Like, is it in, no, oh, it's Houston, Houston, somewhere in Texas. So they'll all be going this summer and they're gonna be coming back with all kinds of cool stuff. It's, they've got a neat theme this year, it's finding your voice. So they'll be learning all kinds of different writing techniques and speaking techniques for students to find their voice in English language classes. Maya Berry and Rachel Levy requested funds to do an art link cultural connection, which is kind of a cool thing that for third graders, the pilot with third grade next year, that the third graders will be able to meet with other third graders and share their artwork and have conversations about their artwork. I guess they're physically sharing the artwork, sending it, and then doing storytelling with the artwork over video conference. And what was appealing about this, probably to them and to us, was that a lot of these other classrooms will be in countries far, far away and they'll be able to have a cultural connection. The second grade, which would be Amanda Gilchrist, Amy Karen, Linda Benaria, and Kendra Katz, requested to have iPads, dedicated iPads for the second grade. I guess they found that this year they were working on things like the Iditarod project and research projects and audiobooks. And the equipment that they had was not up to par. So we opted to fund eight dedicated iPads to the second grade. So Nick Greenwood, who is the Technology Integration Specialist, got a team of five other people to attend the Building Learning Communities, which is, we've done this before. This is Allen November, it's a sort of progressive education group. And it's about using technology in education. And they provide workshops on how to use technology within our current curriculum. Anyway, he is attending with, I think it's four other teachers and then two teachers are doing add-on developments, which are basically like math and literacy on the iPad. I think that's Amanda Gilchrist and somebody else, and I cannot remember. But there's two and four. Let's see, the middle school math teachers and Leslie Yanka requested to be sent to Math Content Coaching, which is fortunately here in Boston, it's at Leslie University. And this will be, I'm actually not positive exactly what they'll be doing, but Bill Gao is really excited about it.
He's excited about everything.
Got swept away, Bill's enthusiastic. No, it's, it's basically, it's not, they're not learning any new math techniques. They're learning about how to, to coach math. So it's probably mostly for Leslie, working with these teachers and learning how to collaborate from grade to grade on how to coach different, you know, math, I don't know, subjects. Let's see, oh, this is interesting. The, the speech and hearing professionals, the SLPs here, are going to the ASHA convention, which is kind of a big deal. It happens to be here in Boston and they will be attending that and probably getting all the latest and greatest in speech. And I guess what I, what was interesting to me was that there, we have seventy students who are, who are getting speech-language support here. So it's kind of cool that we're gonna send these guys. And then finally, Rachel Levy requested to attend a summer art studio. And she, do you wanna talk about it? You're here.
Yeah, that's...
This is kind of cool.
We're going to College of Art Design in California. It's through the National Art Association. And they are hosting a design-thinking summer studio program. So it's groups of other art educators across the country talking about design and creative problem solving. We're gonna take a lot of field trips, we're gonna go to the vans, you know, van shoes. We're gonna go take a field trip there and see how they design shoes. And, yeah, so just working in groups and thinking of new ideas for design.
We thought this sounded pretty cool. And actually, this is the first time since I've been on the CEF that somebody made a request and we actually granted more than they requested because Rachel forgot lunch.
Gotta have lunch.
Well, I was trying to keep the conversation...
I know, that was nice of you, she's staying in a dorm. Yeah, so we were impressed. Anyway, so the CEF has voted to grant, and it's a little bit flexible because we did have some teachers to use their professional development allowance. We don't know exactly how that will shake out. But we voted to spend eighteen thousand, eight hundred and eighty-four dollars this spring for CEF grants.
Thank you.
Thank you, that's great. So we'll be voting, you vote at the end. We have, Melissa reminds me through text, she's having a little hard time letting go of that. We have to, that we need to vote this, right? We need to vote to accept them. So we can, you can vote at the end.
Is any question on that? Are any of the funds to be spent to be distributed before the next meeting?
Oh, goodness, sorry, I didn't write any of the dates down, let's see.
Yeah, I think there are... Okay, so then we can vote on the next meeting?
We could vote.
And we don't have to waive our regular practice then?
Okay, so that's probably a good point. Can you submit a, Allison, will you have CEF submit a hard copy or a copy of the exact grants to Nancy? And, and when we're doing that, Susan, we should understand at that point how much of each of these is CEF-funded versus PD-funded?
Right, we've had conversations and teachers have in fact come forward for purchase orders and they all have that understanding. They've been really good, they've, they've written right in their documentation what they're using of their PD money.
Okay, all right, very good. Allison, have it, Allison.
Yeah, you probably have exactly this.
Okay, awesome, thanks so much. How much did you raise at the gala?
Our total right now is eighty-eight thousand.
Wow, awesome, that's excellent.
That's a great, thank you. Okay, eighth-grade trip? There you go.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Nikki Carmarthen, I'm the current eighth-grade social studies teacher, new this year. So this may be the first time, let me go. I don't know how many were there were. So I just came to talk tonight about the eighth-grade field trip to Washington DC for next year. But I want to talk a little about the field trip we took this year during April break.
Yep.
Dennis and Carrie and I went along with Marcella and Lynn Carmel, and I think that was the group. We took forty-three students and then the five of us, there was forty-eight total. It's run by World Strides, so they basically took care of pretty much everything since when we got on the bus here in Carlisle till when we got back here on the bus that night. I think it was a three-day trip, so we left Tuesday, came back on Thursday night. Everything was taken care of by the World Strides company. And basically, what we're pitching here as the eighth-grade team is we wanted to make this part of the curriculum for next year because it wasn't really part of the curriculum this year. It was outside of the school curriculum because we're starting the spring break.
So when you mean in the curriculum, you mean in, within the school year?
Within the school year. So the dates we're looking at is June fifth through June seventh. And we would like to use the same template as we did this year where we would fly out and come back on the third day.
Did you previously fly or bus?
They...
We bused the first year.
Right, so this gives you a lot more time.
Yes.
We flew this year, we gained...
Because you, at least, as I recall, after the first year, there was the request to make it during the regular school year. And we said, sounds great, what happened?
Um, there was some new staff on board this fall. So we had to sort of work our way into where we were with curriculum and how it fit together. And some reluctance, just sort of to jump off the cliff until we really understood what the field trip was like and how we could do the benefit of it as it rolled into the curriculum. And Marcella along and Nikki along this year. And they can put these together for their social studies and their English curriculum as well.
And it doesn't only have to be cornered to just social studies and language arts. We could also tie in math and science. There are, we can modify this itinerary, as you can see, it's stuffed, there's a lot there. But you can modify it as needed and you can tie in science and mathematics pieces. You can do Smithsonian, different museums in different locations, that you can tie in those curriculums as well. We just saw the value, it was really after the fact. I knew it would be a good experience for the kids, but after the fact, we realized how much tied into our curriculum in terms of language arts and social studies. I mean, it hit on a ton of things that we did this year. And we just thought, after the fact, the kids had a great experience, we had a great experience. It was run so well by the company that we couldn't have really made it any better. That we thought it would be a great thing to add into the curriculum for next year and make it an actual school trip. We know that some of the hurdles are getting all the kids on board and sometimes the expense can be an issue that we talked about as well. So World Strides does, does offer some scholarships. They do offer ideas for fundraising and things like that. And the earlier that we start planning for next year, the sooner families can start thinking about this and get ready.
How much, what was the cost per student?
It was a little bit higher, obviously it was a lot higher this year, not a lot higher, but a couple hundred more this year because of the flight piece and the extra time, of course, for the extra tickets and the extra meals and so on. But it was right around, originally the early, early specialty was ten, was a thousand and fifty.
And that's all paid by the families or some...
Up till now, but these guys are looking at ways that they can do some of the cost of...
And did you have students who opted out because of economics, to your knowledge?
No, we, we offered them ways to apply for, I wrote a couple of grants for a couple of our students through the World Strides company to, that paid for, one of our students, so it's golf shit money.
Wait, you said it was June, the middle, the third?
Fifth to the seventh is the date that we looked at. Because based on the school calendar, we thought that that week for next year looked, that's next year's school calendar, that looked like the most, logistically speaking, the best week we could do it. And later in the year, it would actually be a time where we'd already covered a lot of the stuff.
Pretty much, so you're not worried about losing time, I mean, our eighth graders, right?
Yeah, that, yeah.
Our eighth graders in June.
Part of the reason I didn't send my kid though was that I thought the expense was kind of high.
Yeah, and that's understandable. But I think the, the earlier that we start, we can do classes fundraisers and things like that to try to offset some of the costs. And I've done trips myself, I've gone to Europe with, with students for three weeks, who, a lot of them paved their own way by doing their own fundraising when they had heads up and they were motivated to fundraise on their own. I know it's a little bit harder to get eighth graders to get that kind of motivation. But if everyone's doing it and they all get on board, it's definitely possible, I think. And we do know that there's gonna be some kids who still don't want it, maybe don't want to go and might stay back. And that's something we're talking about curriculum-wise. We'd have, we'd have things for them to do that would tie into similar curricular things as well, so.
Yeah, well, as a, as a strong proponent of taking April vacation and traveling in April and with an eighth grader coming up next year, I'd be very happy to not have a trip.
Well, that was one of the issues we ran into, a lot of kids have sports and vacations during that week that would have come but didn't this year because of that timing as well.
That was another reason.
So how do the kids manage the, how do fourteen-year-olds deal with the five-twenty AM?
Five-twenty?
We only had one that was a little late.
Yeah.
It's because they were locked into a, nobody else was going.
The day we left, yeah, it was really early. But the other days, they were all, I mean, they were beat, but they were up and they, they, we didn't have to go knocking on any doors in the mornings too much.
Did you bus them from here to the airport or they all? That sounds great, I, I'm sure it was a great trip.
Yeah, it was great, I mean, it's, the days are stuffed with things. I mean, the kids, by nine o'clock, they're passed out, so it's...
Sounds good for you.
Yes.
Sounds wonderful.
Yes.
It's good.
Thank you for putting them together.
Very good.
Thank you.
So what do we have to do for our policies? We have to vote it?
Say yes, I think, because it's a...
It's an overnight.
Overnight out of the...
So we're presented this time, we put it on the agenda, we'll vote on it next time.
Very well. Documentation and specifics of the dates.
Yeah, I mean, we'll get filled in as we, I have to touch base with them, but, thank you.
Thank you, Mick. Vote June, vote June, okay. All right, now we have teachers' children attending CTS?
Yeah, so we have, we have a request that I'm recommending moving forward. I don't know, Tracy Millone, to have her child come to kindergarten next year?
Yep.
So that was a request and my recommendation that I'm moving forward.
And Tracy has an eighth grader moving to high school?
She has an eighth grader moving to CCHS.
The high school has approved, or the region has approved that request?
I believe they have, that was on their agenda for Monday night this week.
So I guess, to make Tracy's life easier, do we want to waive our usual practice of waiting them out?
While I can see it would make her life easier, this is specifically the type of issue where after it's disclosed publicly, the community may wish to contact us to present their opinions. And I wouldn't want to shortcut that and prevent them from doing it.
I think that's...
I know I'd be inclined to vote, but I wouldn't want to.
All right.
That's why we have that.
No, you're right, that's a good point, very good point.
And maybe from Linda's application, so that is part of the contract, the CTA contract is that teachers can request that the children come and you can spring it before, but it's recommended by the superintendent comes before it's...
And we generally support those requests because we like including children as teachers and can...
Sure, if you see that, I see that in action.
Right, but to Josh's point, some may not agree. And we have to listen to everybody. Okay, Susan, budget update and realignment?
Yes, so every year, typically March or April, or a little later this year, we realign the budget for any lines that might be foreseeing short or some that have excess funds. And I'm requesting the discussion and the vote today because we only have one more meeting and we need this approved so the town hall can make the adjustments. So as you can see, basically, we'd like to transfer funds from regular education, administration and operations into special education to cover some extra costs at a district and contracted service.
So for a total transfer of ninety-two thousand dollars, is that...
The total transfer is a zero, net zero.
Net zero, but it's total of ninety-two thousand being moved from one bucket to another bucket.
Yes, that's correct.
From, well, three buckets into one other thing.
Yeah, or, it's actually...
Three little buckets into a big bucket.
So I am requesting that you approve the transfer of the funds from regular ed, administration and operations into special education.
And to clarify, we don't have to approve the exact division between salaries versus tuition. It's simply into the big bucket of special ed.
Correct. And, you know, it's not a point that we were discussing, but I just want to make note that we did get our circuit breaker transferred back into the budget. Yes, so this year we got a hundred and forty-one thousand, four hundred and forty-four dollars.
How did that compare to plan?
That was really good. I mean, I think I had planned a hundred and twenty, a hundred and twenty-five. However, on the flip side, what I had put in to offset for the budget that was approved next year, because you're getting the money and it, you know, it factored with like seventy-two, seventy-five percent. And throughout this year, they lowered that to sixty-five percent. So every year, it's kind of like, yes, maybe. They, they say they're gonna go up to seventy-five percent again next year.
How does the realignment, as you described it, the transfer of ninety-two thousand dollars to special ed affect the planning for next year's budget?
It is quite a help, actually, Josh, because in the later half of this school year, we have found that we have some out-of-district tuitions we did not anticipate. So this enables me to prepay some of those tuitions that would normally be a burden on the budget that's been approved.
Do you expect that we would need to make similar adjustments next year on the basis of special education running higher than planned? Because this, what this tells me is special education's running higher than planned.
Yes, correct. So, so a big factor is how many eighth graders next year will then be aging out? And I think two? So we know that and that's what we factor our numbers on. These happen to be children that were throughout the district in different grade levels that were unforeseen till later in the school year. Now they're in, it will be fixed in the ongoing budget. And when we have two graduate out, I keep a placeholder of one. So hopefully, we won't have... So hopefully we won't have surprises.
But we already have had surprises, right?
We did this.
We did that math in October or something.
Correct.
And now, as it's May, we already know that we have four, maybe something like that, right?
Yes.
So, I mean, the, the budgets, I think Josh, you're correct that it's running higher.
Absolutely.
But I think.
This is already pretty factored into next year's budget?
No, it's not, because that's the part they kind of think.
So the circuit breaker.
The circuit breaker helps, but just stepping back from the minutia. We, September, October, we understand what we know about the school that needs. That sets the budget, which winds its way finally as of last week through the approval, right? Meanwhile, things have changed. We don't go back to the town and say, we need more money now. We've put them on notice that we might, we've told them that we might need more, but the fact is, next year's budget was set six months ago.
Of course.
And so these new expenses, Susan's right, that a little bit of windfall, let's call it, of underspending in some other areas helps us. It may be that problem, but it doesn't mean it's factored in. We have that problem and it could, it generally will not get better. I mean, it won't get cheaper.
So is it reasonable to request at next meeting, an update on next year's budget? Both what was, uh, what was approved by the town and then what we think our current view of what next year's spend is going to be? So that we can figure out how we're gonna, how we plan to, to tackle that difference?
Well, here's the one issue, Josh.
But I think we should do, I'm not sure that.
Okay, maybe it's too soon, but.
So, so a big issue on that front is that we don't have the particular schools locked in yet for our new out of district. I can give you an estimate of what an out of district tuition will be, but there's a big difference from a landmark school at fifty-five thousand to a case program at eighty or eighty-five thousand.
Cause some of these kids aren't even in the system yet, right?
They're not in a placement yet. We just know that they're.
But they're not in the Carlisle.
They're in the Carlisle, they haven't been placed in the out of district place.
But some haven't even entered Carlisle.
Well, there's that one that is still in.
Well, limbo.
Limbo.
So I think, I think it's reasonable, what you're saying, Josh, and I, I, I believe what we should do, Susan, is we should work that out through the course of the summer so that by the beginning of next year, we have that clear picture. Because there, there very well could be a gap. And what we've always tried to do, and we will again try to do, is live within our means, period. But trades will need to be made, and I think.
The advantage in, you know, some, there's always, some people are on the side of never do a prepay and others are, once you prepay, you always prepay. But we're fortunate, like we, you know, we can do so much with out of district tuitions.
But that's, I mean.
And that will help in the overage.
That's a short-term thing, but I think, you know, the bigger picture is, as Josh points out, that whatever you did, prepaid, didn't prepaid, incurred it, didn't incur it, we finish up the year, June thirty, done, right?
Yep.
We, you and I need to work through this stuff in the summertime with those assessments, also with this, hopefully sign teacher's contract and understanding that implication.
Right.
And fold that back in and say, okay, here's really what we see and sooner is better than later, but I don't think that June is.
Might be too soon, okay, too soon. We lay too long and the corrections have to be larger to get us.
We need to be right on top of it. And not for nothing, cause we also have a twenty nineteen, twenty, twenty budget to begin to formulate when that starts, right? Okay, very good. So we will, you want us to take a vote today?
Yes.
Okay, so I, I believe first that we suspend our usual practice of discussing an item at one meeting and voting at the next. And we're going to take up the urgent matter of realignment of funds within the department budget.
Second?
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we will do the actual vote of it at the voting time, but we will do it today.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right, uh, Mr. Oh shit.
So, um, tonight we were just going to talk briefly about planning for the superintendent evaluation, which will take place at the next meeting.
Yep.
Um, you receive in your packet, kind of a draft of the form, what the form will look like. This is the requirement of state that each school committee member fill out the form. Um, so this, you're going to be speaking to the professional practice goals here, the student learning goal here, and then the, the district objectives that are listed.
So these are your ongoing.
These are the, these are the real-time goals, so, so Nancy put the real goals here in this document.
These are the ones you put out of your goals.
At the beginning of the year, yes. So what, what the plan is, is that each of you is going to receive a digital copy of this form. This is pretty much the form that'll be filled out, looks a little different than this form. And you're going to be asked to, to check the boxes unsatisfactoryly, need some proficiency, example, you need those. Speaking to the goals and speaking to the four standards, there's four standards listed.
Yeah.
So you're going to receive this form, we'll fill it out with the name and such, make it easy for you. You're also going to receive in your packet, just a copy of the educator evaluation rubric for superintendents, which elaborates on the, the four standards that are listed here, so you'll receive that information just be as a reference.
Question, actually a few questions for that about this too. Um, first question, am I correct in my understanding that this is the state's model, but not the state's requirement for evaluation form?
They provided a model and then people could use the model or they can adopt or adapt the model as they see fit. But, so I think there is some flexibility, but last, this is exactly, this is the process.
I understand.
This is the stream, this is the streamlined version.
They streamlined it.
Looking at the DSC site, this is filling out this form, having each individual person fill out this form is like the minimum requirement?
Well, when that's, I don't, I don't think that's a hundred percent correct. I think that the, we, the evaluation can take any form it wants, or any form the school committee deems proper. It must include a professional practice goal. I think that's the minimalist criterion, as I understand, is that.
So let me ask why we are going above and, what is our rationale for going above and beyond the minimalist requirement?
I've asked that several years running and I'm happy to have you ask it as well.
And I, I asked that actually in concert with the second question. When the new, um, educator evaluation was rolled out, we had a representative from the state come in and presented to us. And in the preamble to their presentation, they mentioned that it has never been shown that an educator evaluation has improved education. So let me ask then about this, maybe that was their justification for doing better evaluations?
Right.
Is that thinking it would then improve education?
I would say in the past, in some spaces, the evaluation process has improved children's experiences. So I, I, yeah, I'm, I'm not going to, I'm not going to dismiss the whole evaluation process as not being a productive endeavor that improves education or someone's experience. Doesn't improve it for, like, does every teacher therefore change their practice and, I'm not saying that, but I'm saying that it's a tool that can be used.
So I, I would like to meet with you before the evaluation and regardless of what form we use to, to gather data for it, but I would like to ask you to do an evaluation as well. Not of yourself, but the evaluation process, please. And to what extent you believe the evaluation process and why improves education?
Yeah, okay, and you're, is this your second, you've done one full evaluation? This is your second. So I, I generally agree with what Josh says. But I think, to me, it's, it's less about, I think, how you evaluate those guys. What Josh says is absolutely relevant. You should make sure the evaluation process improves the outcome, the product. For me, when I think about the evaluating a superintendent, I think it much more, is much more personal about, do we need to provide structured, not, not just anecdotal or general, but structured feedback for improving you, not the school, but you. If, if we don't, and by the way, Melinda, proficient is like good, okay? It doesn't sound it, but proficient is most, means you're doing your job.
It's the target.
It's the target, it's not like, you don't have to say you're succeeding and all that. So if, if a, if a superintendent is proficient at the bulk of his or her duties, then it's kind of a tick the box thing. It's only in the case where it's not, where needs improvement particularly is the one, that that's important. And we've lived that in, in a prior administration, that you, that it's probably better to have a structured tool to use, just from a process standpoint, if, again, if the, if the superintendent improves and moves up to proficient, then it's worked, I guess, unless people have just decided.
Get up.
Fight, get up, right? But if it doesn't.
Is this my explanation of how the evaluation process actually?
But if it doesn't.
It's a very narrow margin where it, but.
But if it doesn't work, I think you want to rely on the, the precedent of a standard. You might want a precedent of a standard.
I, I understand the rationale.
Yeah, okay, so I don't think we're in that territory here, and so I think it's open to a, a broader. And so I would expand your question and say, maybe not just how it improves education, but how Jim personally feels, how he wants to be evaluated, right? How do you want to be, what is the method by which? We want it to be satisfactory to you too, if you think we're way too loosey-goosey.
What, what do you want to know from us?
Yeah.
I mean, we have to. So what I really want to know. I really don't want to discuss it in open session with the press, right?
Right, but it is an open session.
But I, I guess, I guess that, so one, the benefit of, the hardest part, right, and the beneficial part is, yeah, where are those areas that work needs to be done, right? That's what you want to take away from, from your impression or from the faculty or the administrations. So we do, so I get data, I get feedback, we have surveys that we conduct with the administrative team. So the administrative team can provide feedback on my performance and on how the team functions.
So this is my question, where, what influence are you getting already aside from school committee?
So that's, so that's, that's a piece that, through the program I'm in, like, we, they've just completed one and I have another survey on the team's process that, that I'm going to be conducting. So that's one, that's one place that I get feedback.
So you get feedback from faculty?
No, so that's, that's the administrative team, so there really isn't a component for faculty, there isn't.
You don't do three sixty, you don't do a three sixty.
Not right now.
Melinda, we have the flexibility, in many past years, I have personally met with faculty and administrators to gather input for superintendent review. So you're free to do that in one form of your review, evaluation.
And you should, and Josh reminds me, and we, we should make a plan and I'll be sure to remind Christine and Mary as well, that each of you, each of us should take the time to meet one-on-one with Jim this month, from now till the next meeting, to help you with whatever form we, whatever format we adopt, because we can't, we can only discuss his performance in open meetings, so. Gathering input one-on-one is, is appropriate in my opinion, and you should do that.
So, and that's a good, I think that's a, that would be a help, so if you're asking, that's a helpful approach, right? Because you can get honest feedback from a broad people, right? So I think that's one positive thing. What I was going to say is, I, I take a very similar approach as I would with the faculty and the administrations. This should be a very streamlined process. I really don't want people spending a whole lot of their valuable time, they could be planning, gathering of data or evidence or what, because that's what the models ask teachers to do in the penultimate district, and you could be gathering ten pieces of evidence for each standard. People have other things to do.
But I think Dave's point is, it's true, we want it to be a valuable process for you as well, so I, I appreciate that, though.
So I would encourage you, I think, with Josh's approach, this is the realm where it's like, that's where the valuable feedback will come from. Hey, it makes things a little more challenging to sit here and listen as the feedback comes in, right? And we're all reading the book, thanks for your feedback and, but I think that's a valuable thing. So my proposal would be, if you could each take your own approach, I'm going to, I'm also going to share this third document, which is really an update, end of the year, update on the goals that are listed there, what's been accomplished, where I think we are.
Great.
Would you to those?
Is that like yours, I was asking you if there's a self-reflection component to your evaluation?
So this isn't, this isn't a self-reflection? This is more kind of a performance review of what we've accomplished based on the goals we identified. So there could be a self-refle, as you said, we can create our own, there could be a self-reflection component. So they could be the one I write that I have for myself, maybe the one I write, I share with.
Let me, let me understand, Jim, the, 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 um, structure of this. You personally had put out three goals at the beginning of the year?
Two goals, this is a student learning and professional practice.
So the district improvement bunch of things is not.
Well, that, that does fall under.
Okay, because.
Those are, those are the, the strategic objectives we identified at the beginning of the year, and those are really the, the other goals.
So should we be, that's a, I mean, I can certainly see on page one, evaluating you on your own, you came up with your own, I mean, we guided it maybe, but you came up with two goals, a professional practice and a student learning goal. And so at the end, after all the back and forth and the commentary, we should weigh in on the codified evaluation, that didn't meet whatever of those. But as it relates to the district, these three pages of district things, we just sat through a very granular, you know, improvement plan that addresses these. I don't know that it's relevant that we need to evaluate you on how the district is performing, I, I don't see that relevant to that. That's right, I, I don't see it, I mean, it.
Well, it's, it's perhaps a measure of effectiveness, of his, of his leadership effectiveness is how well.
Well, I'd rather than see goal number three in this format, this paragraph format that says, summarizes all this stuff and says, this is what, under my stewardship of the district, the district should accomplish. I'm okay with that, I, I don't, I think this to me is not relevant. And then even more, less relevant is going down to all these little minutiae, which I'm always happy to give up if we don't need, but again, if you prefer to be evaluated on that basis and you're comfortable with that, you know, that's.
Since we're just freestyling this, so what I would recommend, like, it, but the rubric, so this breaks down the rubric into the different components of the job, right? So it's important to have that brought, for you, for you, as, as the people that are going to be providing feedback, right?
I don't know that you can make that assumption.
Well, maybe.
Right, we don't need to worry about that.
But it may have you think about things that you may not have thought about previously, that's all I'm saying, you can think.
Okay, but, but I think.
Some of us are gestalt-based.
It's not, it's not, it's not.
However you want to do it, it's fine.
But, you know, I don't.
I just, I think we need a process, we need something that we can.
It's not intense, I'm okay to keep it, but I think, and I wasn't planning on opening this up as I usually have been, but since Josh gave me the answer. Listen, if you're, if this is, this is not too intense, and if you're comfortable with this format, you like it, then I'm okay with it, but I'm not sure we.
I can be comfortable, I can be comfortable with lots of things, so.
Why don't we do this?
But some, but we need an idea, we need something concrete that you can say, this is how the approach we're going to take.
I think we should each plan on meeting with you in the next, probably two weeks maybe, um, those of us who can, to provide our input into how you're doing and what form should we.
And potentially meet with faculty or administrators as well.
Where else you want, free to do that. But that would be more input, not how methodology of evaluation, but rather just.
Content.
Content, right, thank you. So, and then let's you and I coalesce on, let's coalesce on the.
Okay, so we'll, I'll have multiple conversations.
You'll have multiple conversations, you'll form your own opinion and then you and I.
Form after the process.
And, and I think it's mostly okay, my, I, you know, my, my, my only suggestion at this point is just to collapse these three things into a single district goal that is parallel to these two things.
It's kind of broad, those things are kind of broad, or we can work on an overall summative type of piece.
I guess like it's, you know, if, if, if I were to say on two point six or two point, yeah, you didn't, if I listen to my thirteen-year-old, then on two point six, improve satisfaction with dining room experience, she'd say, some progress.
Yeah.
But do I really need to get that cranium out of my head for the moment?
Well, which day?
Heaven knows my.
Which day and which meal?
Well, there's no meals, no meals for us.
Throw out the positive, that seems to be the big favorite, so we'll do it out of that.
Actually, the organic stuff, they do like that, so, okay, so let's, let's take that.
All right, we'll work. So just for the heck of it, I'm going to share these three documents anyway, cause it, you know, sometimes you can't get to sleep at night, you might. you know, sometimes you can't get to sleep at night, you might want to read how we've moved along with some of the goals, you can pick it up and like that. And if you don't need to, if you just want to show up at the at the old home day and throw the ball and knock me in the dang water, you can do that.
That's another.
That's another evaluation. I know I'm going in first, so it'll be clean but cold, and clean is important.
Okay, very good, so we can move to policies, I guess. So the residency policy Nancy has gone through a number of iterations and what do we have? We're now down to a bake off between the two?
There's two, right, there's one that was recommended by the attorney and then one we had.
And this enough from the packet?
The first one is the one that we had previously with a couple modifications and the second one is the one that Andy recommended, again, in this particular part.
So I guess I hate to kick the can down the road, but there are only two of us who even moderately familiar with this and Melinda's.
And I don't even know what page you're on.
So I guess it's, let me turn to my vice chair, you know, given there's only two of us.
You want to punch?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so I think I think we need to move this to next time. Melinda, you and I can have some conversations about the back on the these issues that are coming and co-learn, so that I can help you get up to speed.
And what makes that if you want to meet too, we could also sit down and go over it.
Right, yeah, we should do that as well, so.
Was this supposed to get a lot of?
Well, yeah, but again, we only two of the five of us have had any exposure to it at all, two are out of town and one has never seen the people, so I don't think it's really, it's an important policy and I don't think we should just take them off.
And there's no reason we need to rush it.
I should say more broadly as even broader context, we've adopted a procedure of reviewing every policy on a three year cycle. So every policy in the book, how many are there?
Do you choose them based on if something comes up that's relevant?
No.
Or is regular cycle?
It's rotated, if something does come up, we may bring it up ahead of cycle, but generally it's every three years.
So we just make sure they're fresh, right? You want to make sure they're fresh, so you're gonna come up, you're gonna go through a whole cycle of these in your time here, but to come in the first day with a complicated one like this, I don't think it's.
Okay.
Okay, so that's that one.
Give me an example, so like for the June meeting, Nancy worked with the simplest policy that we could put on to maybe maybe get.
No, I think by then.
No, but that's how that's how the process is.
And then the what's the last one, the evaluation policy, is that one we have, is this a new one Nancy for us?
Yeah.
So that one you can refresh, that's on the second collection. Isn't Nancy particularly relevant, is that your little joke Nancy?
I say we hold off for the next meeting.
Well, we're not gonna vote, it's just.
Just for you this week, ask any questions, we're opposed to any changes, flag any concerns.
I'm just looking at the last one for staff and I think we may have changed the we changed the tour slightly for our contractual staff.
Changed what, I'm sorry?
We changed the tour.
The tour.
Old. We don't have a rubric, we get a check. Oh, you're right, for the Aids we do.
So are you saying Nancy that it would be this language will be amended?
Yeah.
All right, so that's okay.
So are we either gonna put it up to you?
Yep, and then school safety, what's going on with that? What is that last thing?
That was.
Oh, we're gonna vote that one. That one we made, okay, that's a voting.
School visits, you mean?
School visits.
School visits, right.
That one had no change from the vote.
We discussed that last time.
And we had no changes.
I move that we accept the school committee policy on school visits as distributed in the hand, as distributed in the meeting packet.
You wanna vote it now then?
Oh, we're not voting now?
We're supposed to vote at the end.
Thought this was the end.
All right. Unfortunately, we have we have to grind through the.
Is there more?
It's only been two hours, we have to grind through the superintendent's report.
Oh, my goodness. I withdraw my motion.
Okay, in any case, typically what happens is Nancy selects three policies for review, we look at them, we read them, you get the packet, you didn't because you hadn't been elected yet, but you will generally get a packet the week prior to the meeting, we'll have it stuffed in it and then we can discuss it at the meeting and then we typically wait another cycle to vote on it. Got it, all right, so I think we can, any communications or correspondence?
I think we got, been looking for nominations for the MASC state committees.
Oh, great.
The forms are in there.
You're gonna sign right up.
The forms are in there.
Okay, and how about the superintendent's report?
All right, so I have a few things, I'll try to go quickly, so just so again, Melinda from what, so we're involved with two collaboratives, two educational collaboratives, one is Edco out of Bedford and we're in there with about sixteen urban and suburban districts and right now we're in the process of conducting an executive director search, so I sit on the board of directors there. We started the search for the executive director early in the year, it was fruitless in the first, so we went and hired a consultancy group.
Who's in that coalition?
It's a variety of districts.
It's Metro West Towns.
What do you call it?
Edco.
So you you can interrupt his report to mention that Nancy, does Edco still do super school committee training, school committee member training?
It was, I thought it was MASC.
No, Edco does it locally.
They run they run a variety of programs.
Nancy will coordinate for you, you're gonna have to get training, school committee training.
But that's.
And they offer a good program and you may also want to consider for next year sitting on the school committee roundtable that Edco approves because it gives you exposure to other school committee members, it's just another way to get kind of up to speed, school committee.
Okay.
There you go.
So they offer programming and they they have special education classes and they do professional development, which we're involved in a lot of different programs, but I just wanted you to be aware that we're, the search has opened up again and we'll hopefully be interviewing finalists the week of May twenty fourth. We're also involved with Case Collaborative, it's a small, a concrete area school collaborative.
Case?
Case, C A S E.
Concrete area school or something. So so that's a smaller group, but we're, we just hired our executive director who started this year and and this year Case has experienced a little financial challenges, so we're in the process of trying to.
It's not the first year of their financial challenges.
No, I know, so we're trying to, the new person's, we're trying to get a new, get everything going on a new tack, so we are members.
Who's the funding company for Case?
So the funding comes, we we pay a membership which really is nominal, but it comes from placements, so Case runs programs, special education programs, so some of those added district placements, and we house the Case classroom here in Carla, so part of the benefits being in the collaborative is is we can send students to Case programs that are embedded in schools, so that the child's experiences and like you're in a in an isolated environment for your education are actually embedded in the school, so we have a Case class embedded here and it's just wonderful now, so.
It's actually part of our deal with Cases, we need to do that or we're paid.
Well, there's no charge, it's like the benefit, because in some towns like they're seeing they no longer have space available, so they're still members of Case.
Yes, but I understood back when we're considering space issues, that there would be a financial penalty to not have.
Right, because they don't, they're virtual.
You get a credit if you have supplies.
So those two programs with interesting things going on right now, we also, I'm just gonna run through some of the events we've had this past month, so we had math night back before the April vacation, which was a great success. We are engaged with the world language, we have a committee exploring the future and the present of the world language program here in Carla, we have, a change is coming as the grand dame of French is gonna be retiring in two years, so we're really just getting a sense for is the is the program as it is presently the direction we want to go in or are we looking to see if we can, if we want to make changes, if we want to offer a different language, if we want to go to two languages, if we want to stay where we are.
How would you, how would you decide what kind of changes you want to make? I know that you were doing a survey now, what other kinds of input would you gather to decide?
So so right now, that survey data is critical, the other data we've looked at is is students going to CCHS, what courses they have available at CCHS, because we don't want to stop them down a path that they can't continue there. And then we also looked at whether students stayed within their languages they took in Carla, whether their their ability to stick to it or whether they were switching into Latin, which is a different option they had. So that's what that's some of the data we looked at, but parent feedback is very important, so taking the survey, expressing your thoughts and the survey's gonna be very helpful.
And hopefully you'll be able to do something beyond the survey, gather input from parents and other ways too, I think. Survey sounds like a first step.
It's a step.
So so have you read the survey?
I, well, I didn't because if I clicked next, I couldn't read it without taking it, so I didn't take it yet.
Okay.
I took it.
You can take it more than once.
Stuff the ballot box.
Once we see what's in the camera, we can just. But it's very short, I asked you a question about if you have a student that graduated, you get to give some feedback on their experience here and then if you have students in the younger grades, we asked like potentially what would, where do you think your child might be taken, what would you like to see, what, and we look at the possibility of offering languages that may not have a continuation at CCHS and see if that might be something people are interested in having their children exposed.
When can we look forward to a presentation, an update on the progress of this this effort?
I would plan for September, I mean, we probably, so we've been meeting throughout this year, we have a meeting scheduled for next week when we'll be looking at the survey data and the plan was to have some understanding of what we see as the future by October, November, because that's when we would be starting to think about replacing our French teacher and.
So you're making, you're not making changes for the upcoming school year?
No.
So you have a really good, you know, planning period window here to gather input and try to envision what kind of programming you could do.
Yes, what it can look like, and then then we look at, we've had conversations also with the committee, we have parent representation on the committee also, looking at the program itself, K through eight, the flex program or in the past, they've had the every other year, you were assigned, depending on when you came in, what grade your child was, you were assigned a language and that was your language, and if you came in the next year you got a different language, so that would, we discussed the practices in the past, we didn't ask about that because there was there was mixed feedback on the benefits of assigning you a language and then assigning you a different language, but we'll, we may do some more exploration on what the program looks like.
I just wonder if it might not be, you know, interesting to look at what other options we might be able to offer instead of languages necessarily or alongside languages when people could have a choice.
Yeah, so that's that's interesting, one of the things we developed is we, one of the things we learned is we reached out to a variety of communities to get ideas was that we were surprised to see that many communities had ended language programs in the elementary levels over the.
Meaning didn't have them in the elementary?
Didn't have them and had done away with them in the in recent past.
In the elementary?
Yeah, in the elementary, even right up to sixth grade financially. That, I think we're going down, we should plan to bring the committee and do a presentation.
That was my question.
Yeah, I think that would.
Let me ask one other question, which is we've made an effort on a district goal basis to introduce more technology and I've also heard anecdotally that one of the criticisms of the language program is infrequency, you know, language benefits from constant repetition. Is there any subset of this to use more technology, language technology programs to let the kids get more immersion into whatever language they do choose?
We haven't had that conversation with the committee. I think one of the things that came tools up, one of the one of the pieces that came up was the the flex, was going to flex, going not, no, making, with the students making decision about their language, they're going into fifth grade, so they chose a language in fifth grade, if I decide I want to take Chinese, then I start Chinese in fifth grade and it meets once a week.
Right.
And the feedback was that was so infrequent that it wasn't worth the while and with seeing that the change, there could be a change on the horizon, that we this year probably received a letter, if you were in fourth grade going to fifth grade, that we're gonna continue with the flex program in fifth grade.
Which is.
So there's a smorgasbord?
Yes.
They get continued exposure to the three languages, one because the one class wasn't enough, two because if there is a change, part of our, parts of change processes, we're making a commitment to students, if they jump into a language now, we're making a commitment to them for the next number of years, so we'd have to, so we're delaying that commitment so we don't have the commitment as large if we do make a change.
What I read on the first page of the survey was that right now, kids, you know, choose their language, they take it in sixth, seventh, eighth grade and then when they go to high school, they can go into level two or year two of that language, so they're essentially taking three years of a language here to count for one.
Yes.
Okay, so, and that's interesting, so I'm thinking about, you know, maybe offering the language of a little bit more intense language program, like you were talking about, you know, more immersive through technology or other instructional methods, you know.
Well, we should provide input to, we can provide input to this task force, I don't think we should try to draft the policy.
We can, we're up in the conversation, it is it is the, that is a many, I will say many that I'm aware of, middle schools that have language programs, it's a three to one ratio, right? Six, seven, eighth grade gets you to whatever they call in Spanish two, Chinese two, French two at the high school level, because it's, even if they meet every day, it's just the acquisition is slow, it's better for the students to be exposed, yeah, absolutely.
I think the pron, and my guess is the pronunciation would be better if you start younger, because their ears are, but who knows? Anyway, I don't think we're getting too granular.
So we'll get the, but it's good to teach, Melinda's getting exposed to the bright. So we mentioned the multicultural festival, so there is Marie Laure Riviere is heading up the, I always try to pronounce it correctly, but so last year we didn't have a multicultural.
Jim, we clearly benefit from more French.
Last year we didn't, I know, we didn't have multicultural festival, this year when we did a, we reached out, we had a survey early in the year around diversity, there was tremendous amount of feedback about people who thought the festival was outstanding and that they wanted to build upon that. This year Marie Laure has picked it up and taken the lead and so she's making that happen, I think it's May nineteenth.
Yes.
May nineteenth is the festival, we have a number of parents from a variety of committees and teachers helping out there, so that's great, but we're also looking to expand upon that connection, but May nineteenth, if you come out and support the program, that would be great. Just a quick update on hiring, so so we are, from this year to next year, we are decreasing one section, we are going to be have one less teacher in the building, I say that because when I talk about hiring, we're talking about replacement retirements and people that are reservations and such, so it may sound like we're hiring people, but we're not actually adding additional staff, but we have, we've we filled our open teaching positions that we had, we're in the process of finalizing our nurse position and those are, that's pretty much the extent of, Matt Mailer was here, our new principal, he was there the last, this evening, so we're in good shape with regard to filling out positions.
Start date?
July first. And he's he's already.
You have an ongoing plan, seems like he's getting.
He's been in a number of times, Jay's coming in, meeting people.
Did you set up any overlap with Carrie or is it?
We're living it. So we're living this mobile app now and we, and Carrie said she's flexible, she'll be available, but it's it's working out now, we'll see what what it may look like in July. Then we have a number of trips, actually before the trips last, we had the Tika Tika Boom Boom, if anyone.
I remember that.
Kindergarten, it was a great performance, fourth grade has been to the Harvard Museum of Natural History last week, a number, it's, we really do benefit from having the opportunity to take students out in real life experiences, having the Clark Farm here so the students can go have hands-on experiences, so number of classes has already started making the trek down to Clark Farm. Last week, the early act club had a firefighter appreciation luncheon, so they invited fire, town firefighters in, it was really wonderful, so early act does a lot of great work, I got a number of students, so the students hosted luncheon, in the younger grades, they made thank you notes and thank you cards, it was really just a great. grades, they made thank you notes and thank you cards, it was really just a great, great opportunity for the, to help the children learn about how to appreciate what people do for you, give them the opportunity to express that appreciation, it was tremendous. There also Early Act has an event on Saturday at Great Brook, they have a family obstacle event, so I'd love to support that. Today, we had the first grade musical performance, which was outstanding, another couple of trips, the Old South Meeting House for the third grade, this is educator appreciation week this week, so if you haven't written a note to your favorite teachers, feel free to take advantage of the opportunity. Next week, the PTO is having a faculty appreciation luncheon, and at that luncheon, we'll also be recognizing all of the members of the faculty and staff who have reached a certain remarkable benchmarks, whether it's twenty years of service, twenty-five years of service, Steve is forty years of service.
Steve.
Full answer.
Really? Oh, wow. Awesome.
So we're also, um, we're also in, Christine was at the last meeting of the Concord Carla High School and Concord District Strategic Planning, which is, they're progressing with their plans there, and then we are in CTA negotiations.
Yes, we are.
So that's.
Forgot faculty breakfast.
Oh, that was part of the teacher appreciation, educated appreciation.
And today was?
Today, we got a little ice cream social.
And then next week is the teacher appreciation lunch.
Next week, PTO has a lunch.
Okay, thank you. Committee reports?
I was not back for town meeting, but I understand stuff passed.
Stuff passed, so I can report on town meeting, the, our budget passed, so that was great, and, uh, the, um, the facilities, the municipal facilities budget passed, and the school is not part of that this year, because we have our needs taken care of by our staff.
I actually, did I maybe expand on that for a second?
Yes, you may.
So, um, several weeks prior to a town meeting, there was a FinCon expressed general support facilities committee, but insisted on more clarity regarding process.
Yeah.
The selectmen met and revised the charter for the facilities committee.
Yeah.
And consciously excluded the school and school committee representative from the charter. So.
So not this, so the starter, the learning curve will be done by the other buildings, and I think, I guess the thing that perhaps you and I should think about working on next year is how we might offer the experience that we have here on managing buildings to whoever you hire.
I, I don't know that I'm even part of it either, if, if there's no school committee representative on the committee.
No, aren't you the municipal, aren't you the chair of the municipal facilities committee?
For its first year, not in perpetuity.
If you are, then, I guess, let me turn it to Jim, we should take on what we can do to support that committee through our experience. We, we got to the point where we determined, it was determined through the process that making David available for these many projects was not crap, so they're going to, they've allocated funds now to go hire someone, so that's great, but we can sort of mentor that person, and we also have to think about life after David next year. Okay, uh, I have no committee reports, so I think at this point we can actually vote.
Does it mean we're near the end?
We're near the end.
The end is near?
The end is near, so the first one is the, the budget realignment that Ms. Prey would love to see us vote for.
Can you reiterate my motion?
You may reiterate your motion.
Do I have to say it in full?
No, you don't. I don't think so. Any further discussion? Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. We are also, uh, going to vote the, did we already vote the, the evaluation? No, we decided not to. The school visit one?
Yes.
I'll entertain a motion to accept the school, uh, visit policy as written.
I think I need that.
All right, I'll make a motion to accept the school visit policy as written.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, very good. Okay, now, oh, we have the warrant, Ms. Prey?
Actually, Ms. Anderson has the warrants, uh, there's no warrant for today, uh, so we just have to, Christine decided to throw it.
Okay, you have to read it into the record or read it, okay, we'll dispense with that. Any other business? Citizens comments?
Uh, it sounds like, just Cynthia started on four thirty-three Rotten Street, it sounds like the Tier Two Intervention Program, which used to be called something else before it became Tier Two, is that like an unfunded mandate from the state as it revs up, unlike being a circuit breaker from the state, there's, is there anything similar that comes to?
Oh, you mean like circuit breaking?
No.
There is nothing right now.
It's considered a rich school problem.
Yeah, it's a requirement for all schools.
Is Tier Two supported?
Well, you should have, yeah.
Yeah, it's a requirement for all schools, but they money.
Unfunded mandate, right, as you say. Okay, thank you. So before we adjourn, I want to thank the Mustafi family for, for, thank you very much. I'm forgetting the socks, you're taking the weight shift here, I like your socks, by the way, your socks are pretty nice. All right, Annie, you should get those on camera before you close up, get a pan in, get a pan in on those socks. I will entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session with no intent to return.
So moved, uh, for the purposes, do I need to? Yeah. Purpose one, two, purpose, only for purposes two and three.
Okay.
Oh, second?
Okay, and you have to vote in the affirmative. Modell, aye?
Blatsky, aye?
Aye. Gambino, aye?
Gambino, aye, very good, okay, with that, the fellow school committee is adjourned, thank you very much for sticking it out.
Were you on them the whole time?